My name is Eric Davis. I'm the Executive Director of TV Santa Barbara, and it's neat to see so many of you here in the audience live. This is a special year for TV Santa Barbara as we celebrate 50 years as the Community Access Center for the Santa Barbara region. And thank you again for tuning in tonight. I just want to say thank you to Jerry and Josh and Hap. I know how much you put into this, and it means a lot to the community to have these important conversations. A big thank you to the TV Santa Barbara team for making this happen. Thank you so much. And to Sylvia Arribey and Inoc, who provide Spanish language translation for you in the audience tonight. And the rebroadcast that we will air on community television will now include a Spanish-language version of this candidate form, in addition to the multilingual closed captioning, which is a valuable feature of TV Santa Barbara. Community television provides a platform for local voices and perspectives to be heard, and tonight is a perfect example of that. It allows for the sharing of information, news, and events that are relevant to our local community. Community television also promotes diversity and inclusivity by showcasing a wide variety of programming that may not be represented in the mainstream media. And candidate forms like tonight provide an opportunity for voters to hear directly from the candidates about their platforms, their priorities, and plans for the city. These forums allow for a public discussion of key issues facing Santa Barbara. They promote transparency and help educate voters by providing them with the information they need to make informed decisions at the polls. City Council candidate forums also play a crucial role in promoting democracy, civic engagement, and informed decision-making, and we are honored to bring them to you tonight. It is critical that we preserve community television operations like TV Santa Barbara that lift up local voices and air programming that is most relevant to the lives of our neighbors and our families. And I am proud to say that the city of Santa Barbara has been a partner of community television since its very inception in 1975, and we are grateful for your continued support. And on behalf of the community, I would like to express our gratitude to the candidates for your dedication, for your commitment to serving our city. Your willingness to step up and run for city council demonstrates your passion for making a positive impact on Santa Barbara, and we say thank you. We appreciate the time and effort you put into your campaigns and the important issues that you are advocating for. Thank you for your willingness to listen to the concerns of our residents and for your willingness to work towards solutions that will benefit our beautiful city. Your leadership and vision are essential for the future of our community, and we are grateful for your willingness to run and serve. So best of luck in your election process, and thank you again for joining us here tonight. And now I get to turn it over to Josh and Jerry. Take it away.
Thank you, Eric, and good evening, everyone. Welcome to the first, count it first, Santa Barbara City Council Election Forums of the 2024 campaign season. I'm Jerry Roberts. This is my colleague, Josh Molina, and we'll be co-moderating both of tonight's discussions. And we want to second the motion to thank Sylvia Arribey, who will be providing our Spanish language translation. We're going to start in just a minute by hearing from the major candidates from District One. Tonight's forum is cosponsored by Newsmakers, the Santa Barbara Talks Podcast, and by our host, of course, TV Santa Barbara. Josh?
Thanks, Jerry. It's always a pleasure to be able to do something like this with you. Okay, before we get going, before we introduce the candidates, I want to kind of lay a little bit of the groundwork of how things are going to work. Our purpose is to give the candidates an opportunity to state their views on the major issues facing Santa Barbara. We also hope to draw out some key differences and distinctions between the candidates to help voters be informed so they can make the correct choice on Election Day. So we're going to keep the discussion a little loose in order to take time for follow-up questions as well as responses from the candidates to each other. Each forum will last about an hour. We've asked the candidates to limit their answers to no more than two minutes, and each of them will also have the opportunity for a closing statement of two minutes. And for the live audience here, we're asking you to please hold your applause until the end. TVSP, obviously, we're live streaming, and we want to sort of keep on pace with our schedule. Jerry?
Okay. Without further ado, let me introduce our candidates. First, incumbent Councilmember Alejandra Gutierrez and the challenger, Wendy Santa Maria. Thank you both very much for coming and for running. It's not easy to put yourself out there, and I always want to say that I appreciate it. Alejandra, let me start with you and ask, why should voters support you for another term? Why do you deserve reelection?
I believe I deserve reelection because I, one, I have experience being on council. I was born and raised here. I have skin in the game. My roots are here in this city, mainly in District One. I want to finish what I started. I believe that the city is in a very critical position. We are very divided, especially with the housing crisis issue that we have going on and the economy being the way that it is. And it's important to bring community together, and I've been doing that for the last two decades with the work that I've been doing, the volunteer work, and being part of the larger community. I've done, the main thing that I've done is bridging communities together.
All right, thank you. And Wendy, what would you do differently that would make you a more effective representative? Why should voters make a change?
Thank you, Jerry, for that question. The number-one difference that there would be were I on the city council is I would show up. I would be with community. I would be present at the important meetings to appoint our city administrator. I would be there for all of the budget discussions. I would be present because, yes, we need a voice for our community, but we need, it would be nice to have a local voice, yes, but we need a voice, period. And we need someone that is willing to show up, that actually answers back to their constituents because it's true, we are in an immense crisis, and we need to take truly bold action to get our city on the right path. And that means bringing a community of policy experts, city staff, current city council members, and working families to make sure that our priorities are with helping our working families thrive. We can't lose sight of what we need on the city. The city needs to address its issues of floods. It needs to address the issues of power outages. We have, of course, yes, the housing crisis. We need to make sure essential workers have good wages and benefits. So the one difference is that I have proven myself for nearly a decade in this community of being at the grassroots level. I'm not a politician and never saw myself in this position, but at the end of the day, I have been pushed to run for this position because we need someone who's going to show up and have unwavering support for working families in the city.
Thank you.
Okay, a big surprise. A lot of our questions are going to have to do with housing, so we're going to start there. We obviously are experiencing a major housing crisis in Santa Barbara. So before we dig deep into the real specific questions about housing, I'm wondering if you could talk just a little bit about your own personal housing situation and tell us how it informs the decisions you will make on council. Are you a renter? Are you a homeowner? What is your personal experience? Because obviously, so much of this issue affects people who rent. It affects property owners. Where are you coming from? Tell us your personal sort of housing story, and we'll start with you, Wendy.
Thank you, Josh. So I'm a renter. I'm a working-class tenant. I live paycheck to paycheck because my rents are really high. My rent is about to go up to $5,000. I live in a home on the East Side with my family, including my sister who's here today. And I rent from a small mom-and-pop landlord. And the reason I want to mention that is because in my years renting, in being a tenant in Santa Barbara, there has been a clear distinction between my experience between renting from a big corporate landlord who you often don't see, who are often not responsive when things are going wrong in your housing unit, when it's not safe and habitable. There's a big difference between corporate landlords that are absent versus our mom-and-pops who probably just live up the street, right? Like, this is their generational wealth. This home means something to them. It's not just a number, and they take care of their units. And so whenever I can, I try to rent from a mom-and-pop. And I mention that because this would inform my policy decisions in a way that we need to make sure that we don't just cast blanket solutions. We can't say all landlords are bad or all landlords are good. That's not the way to do things. There needs to be some nuance in this, and we need to make sure that any ordinances that we place, that there is some wiggle room and some flexibility to account for economic hardships or other things that our small mom-and-pop landlords face.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Gutierrez?
Thank you, Josh, for that question. I'm a renter as well. I also live paycheck to paycheck, working class, but I also come from a district where there is a lot of Latino mom-and-pops. And the reason that I have never supported a rent cap is because I understand what rent control will do to mom-and-pops. And I'm glad to hear that my opponent has changed her views in creating, making housing providers make them seem like they're villains in the community, and there's a huge difference between corporations and mom-and-pops. And the reason that in my district you have a lot of mom-and-pops that actually house the working class, especially workers that don't have a social security, that don't have good credit, that have, there's multi-generation of individuals working, living in one household to be able to pay the rent. And that's why I have supported for tenant protections. I have been very mindful to create a balanced solution for the housing situation we have in the city.
Just one quick follow-up, Councilmember Gutierrez. You say you're a renter. Do you rent from a family member? Do you rent from just the open market? Because there's, I just want to clarify that because I know that that comes up in the context of this race.
Yeah, I'm very proud to say that I rent from my parents. They have worked very hard to create their generational wealth from owning a second home.
Yeah, great, thank you. Jerry?
I'm glad you mentioned rent caps and rent control because we want to dig in on that issue a little bit. As you know, Prop 33 on the November ballot could have a big effect on rent control throughout California by lifting the so-called Costa-Hawkins law, which has really restricted rent control for many years. Let me ask both of you, what is your position on Proposition 33? And if your position prevails in November, what impact do you see it having on Santa Barbara? Alejandra, you want to take that one first?
I'm definitely against it, especially when I really want to protect those individuals that have been sacrificing a lot to live here and be able to own a property. Right now, a lot of the people that are pushing the rent control issue, if this law goes in effect, it will definitely affect the small landlords, the mom-and-pops, because now they will be, they will be part of that rent control. They will not be excluded.
Thank you. Wendy?
Let me make sure my mic is on. Thank you for that question, Jerry. I do differ from Ms. Gutierrez here in that I would support it, and let me tell you why. So Prop 33, what it would do is, like we said, it eliminates Costa-Hawkins, which is the exemption for rent stabilization ordinances for single-family homes owned by actual people, not corporations, condos, and the big one, units built in the last 15 years. So the reason that I would vote yes on Prop 33 is because we can locally still create exemptions for our mom-and-pops because a lot of our mom-and-pops don't have the capital that these big corporations have to be able to, to not need to raise the rents as much. So I, in the housing reform package that our campaign is proposing, there is an element of the rent board, and the rent board would be the avenue where small mom-and-pops could come and seek exemptions. And we need to make sure that that's possible because we need to be flexible. But the reason why I would support Prop 33 is we need to include the latest buildings, excuse me, the latest housing units that enter the market. Those also need, we need some sort of cap on those rents. Otherwise, we're just going to keep seeing market rate units entering the market, and that doesn't help our workforce. The only ones that can afford $6,000 apartments are, you know, tech employees from Silicon Valley who come to our beautiful city. So yes, I would support it, but I would make sure that locally we implement some measures to protect our mom-and-pops who are going through economic hardship.
Thanks for that answer. Another question about tenants and renting. When landlords evict tenants in order to renovate a property, should tenants have a guaranteed right to return? And under what conditions should there be a limit on the rent increase? Alejandra?
That's a really good question. I do support tenants being able to come back to their homes that were rent-evicted. I don't, I don't support a rent cap. I voted on the rent eviction that just caused rent eviction, except for the rent cap. Just like there is bad landlords, there's also bad tenants, and I think that we should, again, be fair across the board. But yeah, I support it with my vote for the, you know, the right to come back to your unit.
Wendy?
I was proud to work on the ordinance that Ms. Gutierrez mentioned, and we were successful in passing an anti-harassment ordinance and a right to return. And so I'm happy to say that the city already includes that, but like Ms. Gutierrez mentioned, we failed to include a cap upon return. And let me tell you why. That's the big change that I would make on the city council. When a landlord renovates their apartment, especially a corporate landlord, we're not talking mom-and-pops here. Let's talk about the real issue, which are the corporations. Corporations are neglecting their buildings. They literally will not update things for decades. I have tenants telling me, hey, 20, 30 years, my carpet has not been changed. These are safety hazards, and it's not the fault of the tenant that a landlord has neglected their investment property. So I would want to make sure that we do have a cap upon return. I was successful also in working with a coalition with Galita City Council, where we also passed the cap, we did pass the cap upon return in Galita, and that was only to 10%, to the state's cap, price gouging cap on rent. So that was what we were asking for at the city council, nothing less than what the state already says, but unfortunately, our current city council failed to pass that provision in the ordinance. And where I am on the city council, I would make sure that we bring back a cap upon return because tenants deserve the opportunity to come back at a reasonable rate for a safe and stable home.
All right, thank you. One last question related. What percentage of new housing planned for the Macy's site at La Cumbre Plaza should be inclusionary? Alejandra?
That's a good question. There's already state policies, and I think the city also has that 10% inclusion. That is a big project, and I think it's first of its kind in the city. And I think my colleagues and I and city staff are still trying to figure out a good balance for a project like that in the city. But that project is an example of what developers will build with, according to state law. We, recently, we spoke in the city council about, my colleagues, Councilmember Jordan and then Councilmember Friedman, talked about bringing a memo to the developers to negotiate some, to come to common terms in providing more of affordable housing and where that building would better serve the needs of that community and really not disturb so much the infrastructure and even impacts to the schools. So it's a newly project, so we're trying to figure it out as we go.
All right. Wendy?
Thank you, Jerry. The projects like La Cumbre's and even Piso Nuevo's, these big projects, we need to make sure that the majority of those units are inclusionary, and the majority are dedicated for workforce housing, affordable, truly affordable workforce housing. The folks that we need to house, the crisis that is felt the most by are the people who keep the city running. So I would want to advocate for as many of these units to be included, and we do need to take into account impacts to water supply, impacts to, you know, waste disposal, traffic. We need to make sure that these, these projects are built along existing public transit routes already. We need to reduce the reliability on cars, and we need to make sure that the majority of these units do, are at a, within reach for our working-class community.
All right, let me just press a little bit on that. Give me a number. I mean, it's 10% is required. What's the right number? Is it 15? Is it 20? Or is it, is it more than 10? Alejandra?
So based on my experience on council and the development agreement that I was, that I supported, that we hadn't had a development agreement in the last 20 years, that developer for those units, he actually, he went above the 10%. He did 24%, and the La Cumbre project is a lot bigger than that. I would say anything between 20 and 30.
All right. Wendy?
We, for that question, it's important that we also look at our housing element and our regional housing needs because we need to make sure, how, how many of each type of unit are we looking for? Do we really need more market rate units? Do we need more affordable units? Do we need more workforce units? And I think that's what we need to abide by. So whatever the need of the community is, that's what, it should be majority. So, I mean, if you're looking for a number, I guess I would say majority, majority of the units, and ideally, if I can push for it to be more than half of the units, to be truly affordable workforce housing, the more, the better. It's what we need.
All right, Jerry, you took a couple of my questions, so I'm going to, I'm going to go back to the one that we didn't ask. So I apologize. We're going to go back to rent control for one second. You know, assuming that Prop 33 passes, if it does, and all restrictions are lifted on what local governments can do, what would a rent control, rent cap ordinance look like? Is it 2%? Is that the, is that the number? How would you craft it? And we'll start with you, Wendy. If you're elected, what is the number? What would it look like?
So a rent stabilization ordinance, after my years of experience working with city staff, current city council members, you know, working families and policy experts on this, it would be a 2% cap. And here's why. I, my day job is I'm a labor organizer, so I work directly with working families. And the other side of the housing crisis people sometimes don't talk about is the fact that wages are not keeping up with rent increases, and that's where that number came from. The average wage increase, if you're able to even get one, mean 2% is, you know, if you get 2%, at least that's something. A lot of jobs don't even get rent increases. I've nev, or, excuse me, not rent increases, wage increases. So a rent stabilization ordinance, in my view, would be, yes, a 2% cap. We would also establish a rental registry to be able to keep track of rents not going past that limit and to make sure that we keep track of the habitability of units. That would be funded by the rental registry per unit per fee that we would implement, and it's been very successful in other cities. The other thing that we would implement is a rent board, which would be the governing body to be able to enforce rent stabilization, but would also be the body that condo owners, a small mom-and-pops could go to and say, hey, I have a legitimate reason for raising the rent past the legal limit, and we can work that out. So I want to make sure that we include the newly-built units.
Okay, all right. And then Councilmember Gutierrez, you've said you're clear, you don't support a rent control ordinance, rent stabilization. Is there a number you could support? Obviously, when you're in office, if this comes up again, you know, you may have to reach some sort of compromise. If it's not 2%, is there a number you could support, or is it just a no?
Josh, we have rent control already in the state of California. What we need to create is a balanced housing solution. So what happens is when you, rent control is just a band-aid. It's only going to help the people that are housed right now, but it's, but that's not a solution for the generations to come. There is more students, there's people that are getting hired that, that need housing. We also have a high demand for houses, and we, we haven't really built anything either. So you put a rent cap, and then now property owners are suffering with cancellations of home insurance. Then you have inflation. You also have property taxes that go up. So the mom-and-pops that my opponent talks about to protect, they're the first ones to sell when there's a rent control. And there hasn't been a city in the state of California that you, that we can say that it has helped the housing crisis. It actually creates the opposite. The working class ends up leaving those cities. You have a very clear division of just market rate and very, very low. You have gentrification that happens, and so we need to create a balance. And in order for landlords to maintain their properties and be able to be good landlords to tenants, we have to create a balance. We can't put a cap.
So no, so no number, the 10%, you know, whatever, that, you're fine with that, but no number?
No, we need to figure out to build more homes in Santa Barbara.
All right.
All right, I'm going to steal 13 or 14 more of Josh's questions. Couple of District One specific issues real quick. As you know, there's a huge amount of debate and discussion endless about State Street, but what about Milpas Street? What should be done to bring more economic vitality to the main business corridor of District One? Alejandra, you want to?
I've, thank you, Jerry, for that question. I've said this, I've been very vocal about when we, about Milpas, when we discuss about State Street and all the money that we have poured into State Street. And Milpas has shown that even in really hard times during COVID, Milpas has thrived. I, I believe, I strongly believe, and I'm hopeful, that hopefully we can get an association going on Milpas. The problem with Milpas is that, again, we go with, it's the working class, so a lot of people that live there are working day to day to survive, to stay in Santa Barbara and to keep up with inflation, and so a lot of people don't get involved. And what I really would like to do is hopefully, when I continue to be in an office, is to provide more resources, more education, to bring business owners together, to provide better sidewalks on Milpas, instead of pushing ideas into the district that are not meeting our needs. We have a bicycle lane that we've, the city poured us so much money that is hardly ever used. We have a lot of children that walk to school, and so to be able to revitalize Milpas, it's very important to the community there.
All right. Wendy?
Thank you, Jerry. I agree with Ms. Gutierrez. We, the revitalization of Milpas needs to be focused on supporting our small businesses. And my conversations with small businesses, a lot of times what comes up is just the bureaucratic red tape that there is at City Hall, and a lot of business owners who sometimes, they speak both languages, but they feel more comfortable in Spanish. And they don't really feel like there are enough resources in their preferred language at City Hall. So one of the first things that I would want to do is make sure that we provide these resources with an angle of language justice and that we ensure that people, no matter what language they're choosing to use, have access to those resources. It's also about meeting people where they're at, because I've been speaking to a lot of business owners on Milpas and State Street, and they have reached out to the city for resources, but they didn't really hear back. And so the, it keeps coming up that, you know, city's not very responsive and they need more resources. And I think expecting people, like Ms. Gutierrez said, they're living, you know, they're working every day trying to survive, so expecting folks to just take time out of their day to come to City Hall is not realistic. We need to be out there. And unfortunately, in the last four years, business owners have not seen Ms. Gutierrez be out there. So that would be the key difference between her and I, is that I'm already out there and I would continue to be out there as a city council member.
Alejandra, if you want 30 seconds to respond.
Yeah, please. I do want to educate the public of what happened on Milpas. My district is known to be taken advantage of. And there was a couple of years back where Milpas wanted to create an association, and it became super political. So you had outside voices coming in because they wanted a political position, and what they created was division within my own Latino community and folks in the business community. And we are still living the aftermath of that, of that situation. And then on top of that, the city already has a lot of red tape just to provide, to get the resource into the community.
All right, thank you. And finally, do you support the proposal to spend $32 million of public funds to build a pedestrian bridge over the 101 to provide better access to the waterfront? Wendy?
You know, I have been speaking to city staff about this, and it's a bit of a complicated issue because it would be nice to have that, but we are also in a budget shortage. And I want us to be smart about how we use our funds. I would love to revisit that project and assess whether it's truly a necessity for the East Side because there are a lot of pressing needs on the East Side, and we need to make sure, I mean, $32 million is a lot of money. We want to make sure that it's invested in what people truly need.
Holly?
That was an agenda item that came to council, and I was very
That was an agenda item that came to council, and I was very vocal that I did not support it at the time because it was publicized to the public that the city was going to, going after those funds to build this bridge, when in reality, the city just wanted to apply, put an application to the state to see what grade they would get. And for me, that was a waste of time of city staff because we have a lot of pressing issues. Another thing that I, having experienced working with city staff, and what a lot of people don't know, is that there are two projects in that area. It, and the state of California told the city, the sustainability department, they had a proposal to be able to expand where the Sycamore Creek ends, and it's right by the zoo. It's right by where the, the bridge is going to end. And so the city said, either you work on a, getting funding and applying for the bridge or to make where the creek ends, the outage of the creek, be able to expand it. And for me, it's, it's more critical to support the expansion of where the creek ends to avoid flooding in my district.
Great. Thank you. Let's move to State Street. We're gonna start with Councilmember Gutierrez on this question. What is your assessment of the work of the State Street Advisory Committee today? Has the committee moved with enough urgency to match the urgency of the needs of the downtown?
Thank you for that question. Having experience working in, in government and especially living and working in Santa Barbara, I understand that it's, it's always really difficult in the city to, because there's so much red tape, to move a project forward. I, I wish that we can, as a community, come together, but we've been really divided about State Street, and I think that's why there's been a holdup. There's also been changes of leadership. But no, we haven't really addressed the needs. And I think, cause there's a lot of special interests as well. I wish that we can start moving forward. It hasn't worked that the city, that State Street has been closed. I have vocalized my support for a pilot program to partially close State Street to provide a shuttle that will provide access to everyone in the city and just to create more mobilization downtown, to get more business going. And I, but I, I really, I'm really appreciative of the work that my colleagues and the community's doing in the State Street master plan. But it, it has been very divided with special interests and, and it's been political. But I think it's time that we start moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Wendy Santa Maria?
Yes, so State Street, there's been, you know, the huge debate of cars or no cars. But in my opinion, we're, we're wasting a lot of our energy on trying to debate about cars when we should be focusing our limited time, energy and resources into supporting local businesses to really make it into State Street and to be able to establish themselves as a permanent staple in our community. At the end of the day, you know, State Street, whether it's opened or closed, what we need is to drive more business to it. We need to have lucrative businesses that will actually be able to stay on State Street. And I mean, look at State Street. There's, there's not very much parking you can do there. If you open it up to cars, I mean, cars don't shop. It's people that shop. And at the end of the day, if you drive down State Street, you're still gonna have to park off of State Street and walk to it anyway. So I've spoken to a lot of business owners on Lower State Street, which is in my district. And a lot of them have told me, you know what? Keeping it open to people and, and closed off to, to cars driving by has actually helped my business. And so I don't want to come in with an idea or agenda of my own. I really want to listen to what's going to help these businesses thrive. Cause at the end of the day, that's what it's for.
Okay, let me kind of stick on State Street here. So much has been discussed about building housing downtown. And one of the barriers that property owners say to building housing downtown is that they don't have enough density in order for them to make it profitable and viable. So they often say, oh, it's easier to build a hotel. We do have the big project on Gutierrez Street in Anacapa. But we're talking about the State Street corridor. What should the city do to allow people to own those, who own those properties, incentivize them to build housing? Cause right now, they say, city won't allow us enough density to build housing in a way that makes sense for us. Would you support higher density? Would you support going, you know, 60 feet? How high can you support? How do we bring more housing downtown? Let's start with you, Wendy, please.
Thank you, Josh. I, I do support the construction of affordable workforce housing. And I really want to make sure we make that distinction because if we're just creating market housing on State Street, it's not going to do anything for our housing crisis. And it bears repeating that only building housing is not the way to solve the housing crisis because you need to account for the tenants that are already living in their units. So we need to make sure that the housing solution, yes, includes the building component, but it has to include all the other components of a real housing reform package. So as far as density and heights, I want to make sure that the density conversation takes into consideration impacts to water supply, impacts to waste management, impacts to traffic. It needs to take those into account because we can't create an unsustainable project. So density can be considered so long as it's not putting a strain on our current resources in his, in my opinion, as long as it's majority affordable. It needs to be because we need to be, as city leaders, more firm about this is what our community needs. This is a beautiful city. People will always want to build here. And it's, and it, it will always be lucrative to build here. Property prices go, have been going up an insane amount over the last few years. So it is a lucrative idea to build here, but we need to be firm about what we allow developers to do. So yeah, commercial, mixed-use commercial and housing would be wonderful. It would bring, it would allow workforce to be able to live there. It would also bring clientele directly to the State Street businesses. So I think it's one key component that we can use to truly revitalize State Street.
Four stories, five, six stories? How tall?
My question? Okay. I don't want to go anything beyond what we have. So I mean, I don't, this is not LA, it's not Manhattan. We can't be building skyscrapers, like the eight-story building that was proposed by the, near the Mission. I mean, that's, in my opinion, a huge no. That's too tall. And we need to make sure that we abide by, you know, architectural and cultural background.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Gutierrez, same, multiple questions.
Yeah, thank you for that question. I'm actually really proud to announce, I, this is, this will be the first time that I actually mentioned this. I have been working with a local developer in town, housing provider, that has, has three, had three hotel projects on the pipeline to be built. And because of the relationship building that I've had in this community, he is now gonna convert one of his hotels into housing. And he's now working with the Housing Authority to bring workforce housing into the downtown. I think many cities have shown examples of the importance of having, having housing in the downtown area. And I, as a local, and I treasure our downtown, and I, I would really support not to build any type of, you know, buildings higher than the height limits that we have right now.
All right, thank you. We're getting a little tight on time. I, I want to ask you two yes or no questions. And if you would, just, you can elaborate maybe 30 seconds, but don't, don't take the full time on, on these two. First, do you think all eight blocks of the current promenade should remain closed to cars? And second, do you support or oppose a moratorium on construction of new hotels? Ally, I think you're first this time.
The first question about car, opening to cars downtown? No, like I said, I think we need to start trying something differently and opening part, a part of State Street to cars and monitor that and see how that, that is working because what we have now is not working. And the second question?
The hotel, uh, moratorium?
Yeah, I, I think we, we do have to put some sort of control now with hotels and really focus on the housing crisis that we have. But again, we have to do it mindfully and we have to create community. We cannot vilify developers because they, you know, they want to build hotels. I think we, we really need to start coming together as a community to create a balance.
All right, Wendy? Keep all eight blocks closed to cars or open some or all and the moratorium on hotels?
Thank you, Jerry. We, we do need to come together as a community and make sure that we have input from our existing businesses on State Street on if we were to open any, which ones would make more sense. I, the majority of the folks that I've talked to, both community members, you know, local families that run the businesses here, they like it closed. So I, at the end of the day, I want to abide by what our community is asking for. As far as the hotel moratorium, yeah, we need that. Housing over hotels always, that will always be my stance. Not because hotels are bad, but because we just, we have a lot already. I mean, you walk down on downtown, there are so many of the big names, but also small boutique hotels that are owned by local families. And even they aren't at full capacity. I would rather drive the business to the existing locally owned hotels and like Bed and Breakfast that we have here and allow them to thrive rather than introduce more competition into the market.
All right, one more, a quick one. Are you for or against the proposed one-half cent sales tax increase on the November ballot? And 30 seconds, why? Ally?
I have been very vocal about, I mean, I don't support the tax. It's a regressive tax. I, I believe it's going to affect those, especially in my district. I understand that we have to balance our budget, but I don't think we have to create another tax to be able to balance the budget. I know I clarified this in Josh's podcast. He had some misunderstanding. I voted no on the tax, but I did vote with my colleagues to put a priority list if that tax would go through.
All right. Wendy, for or against?
I, after speaking to city staff who have been working on this sales tax measure, I would support it because our city staff said that this would be the way to preserve jobs at the city level and to make sure that community resources, like our libraries and parks, can stay open. And I, I mean, I'm not happy about the position we've been put in. Just a few years ago, we had a budget surplus. And I remember being there advocating for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to have some of that money. And that's why we have it today. But it's, a regressive tax is going to impact, you know, our, our lower income community more. And at the same time, it's a balance between they'll be impacted more, but they'll also be able to retain access to the services like the library and all of that. And we won't lose city staff that can staff those positions, right? So it's not ideal, and I want to make sure that if that sales tax goes through, we are careful with how we use that money for the true priorities of the district. But we need to find more avenues. We can't just be taxing ourselves to death to, to, you know, make up for a potential mismanagement of the budget. We need to be fiscally responsible.
Thank you. And just to clarify, I didn't have a misunderstanding on that. At Finance Committee, you voted one way, and then Council, you voted a different way and didn't offer an explanation. So I just want to make it clear. It wasn't that I misunderstood, it was that you didn't explain why you changed your vote, just to be clear. Okay, we're gonna ask a couple of specific questions. So I have a question for Councilmember Gutierrez and then a question for Wendy Santa Maria. Okay, Councilmember Gutierrez, you were elected the first time by eight votes with support from the Santa Barbara County Democratic Party. You did not seek an endorsement from them this time. Just this week, Cristian Alonso, the Santa Barbara Young Democrats, put out a press release saying you missed 60 meetings, council and other committee meetings. Can you talk about that and address that? Because there is a feeling that, that you courted the Democrats and now you don't want them, and they feel let down. So can you address this issue? Why did you not seek the Democratic Party's endorsement this time? And what do you say to people who are putting out press releases to the media that you missed 60 meetings?
Thank you for the question and thank you for that information. I didn't know that this individual had put the press release out there. And I want, I want, I do want to clarify something. I didn't seek the Democratic Party. They actually came to me. I never had plans to become a politician. I've always said I'm a public servant. And I didn't seek their endorsement because they made it very clear that the minute that I didn't push their political agenda, I wasn't part of the party. And I want eight votes because of the people that I have served for many, many years and that believed in me. People will always have their opinions. And the reason that I have so many people watching this race, one, because I'm a local. I, I wasn't groomed to become a politician, and my vote is not to be bought. I stick to my values. And when you do the right thing for the greater good and not a specific political party, that, those are the consequences, and I'm okay. I'm okay. This is why I'm running again. And I don't have, I will put people's needs before any political party or political agendas.
And you addressed it on my podcast, but can you just quickly explain why you missed some meetings?
I, yes, I addressed it in your podcast, and I, I was ill, but I also want to remind people that we were in COVID. And for, it's, I find it so ironic that those people that say that I have missed so many meetings and I just heard my opponent that I missed when we hired the city administrator. I was actually one of the very few that advocated to hire this specific city attorney. During COVID, I was actually present in my community, in the district, providing Wi-Fi for the, for the students that couldn't afford. I opened the first educational pods in the entire city to provide children that lived, that live in, in, that live renting one rooms or didn't have space to actually go to school or didn't have access to a computer. I provided food once a week. So I was actually in my community. I might not have been part of these social groups with political agendas, and maybe that's why they were upset.
Okay, thank you. Jerry's gonna have the question for Wendy.
Wendy, Councilmember Gutierrez several times has referred to being born and raised here, having deep roots in the community. You've lived in Santa Barbara a relatively short time. And in your campaign, have really focused on tenants and their needs and the problems of renters. What assurance can you give voters and residents outside of District One that you understand and will consider the needs of the whole city before those of your district?
Thank you, Jerry. That's a great question. So a lot of the, of the solutions that I'm advocating for are for the entire city and not just limited to District One. I have spent nearly a decade organizing and working in this community, advocating for working families. It goes anywhere from yes, advocating for, for tenants to not be displaced and not end up like our unhoused community. And it ranges all the way to fighting for strong contracts and making sure that our essential workers have good wages and benefits. So I want to make sure that, yes, we focus on housing. And I know folks often mention like, that's all you care about. I mean, honestly, housing is at the crux of so many other issues, and it's why I, I advocate for it so much. But let's not forget the rest of the pressing issues. Balancing our budget, addressing that budget shortfall, really making sure that Milpas and State Street have the support to thrive, that we address the issue of crazy power outages. And I've actually been discussing with CEC staff, I actually haven't, I don't think I've said this in public before, but I've been working with CEC staff because they are working on creating these microgrids for neighborhoods. And these microgrids would be a really good resource to, to create resiliency against the frequent power outages that happen in the East Side and in other parts of the city. So we need to make sure that the, that our next city council member is focused on the needs of everybody, not just a wealthy few. It needs to be about our climate resiliency. We need to do something about floods, update storm drainage infrastructure. There is a long list of community needs, and I'm ready to address them.
Just one follow-up to like zero in on Jerry's question.
Yeah.
There are property owners in this room. We know they're watching. They know they see you as, if you get on council, you're gonna pass rent control, you're gonna be the fourth vote. What can you say to them so that they can, I mean, is, do you have anything to say to them that you're not an enemy of them? Like, how will you work with them? How can they see you on the council as not just somebody who's gonna be pro-renter, pro-tenant, pro-things that they have opposing views on?
Right. I'm glad you asked that, Josh. So I have been working over the years with a lot of the good, small mom and pop landlords. And a lot of the, of the policies or the suggestions that I'm putting forward is making sure that we don't hurt our local mom and pops. We need to make sure that there are exemptions for them. We need to remember this is generational wealth for them, and they're really just trying to support their families. So I've been very clear about the, or I hope I haven't, in case I haven't, I'll do it now. But really, the, the issue in the city has been the out-of-town landlords who are often absent. We, any tenant that you, or honestly, any tenant, any person that you talk to walking down the street, if you ask them, where do you rent from? And it's a big property management company, chances are, they've had a very bad experience, either not, you know, not having their needs addressed, you know, mold, health issues. There's so many things that happen. So we need to make sure that we balance those things. I understand that developers want to create profit, and Santa Barbara is a great place for that, but we need to make sure that we balance the need- for that, but we need to make sure that we balance the need to make profit and the need for people to have a home, which is a basic need. And I think there's a balance there. I've already been working with some mom-and-pops, and they are huge supporters of my campaign, because they know that I will create a balance and not a divide between landlords and tenants.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna wrap up, but we have time for just a couple more questions, but one-minute answers before your closing statements. Do you support or oppose the proposed contract between the city and the Santa Barbara South Coast Chamber of Commerce for developing an economic development plan at a cost of up to a million dollars over three years? This is a proposal, no bid, they just worked it out, came to the Finance Committee, gonna go to the Council. Do you support this? We'll start with Councilmember Gutierrez.
Yes, I do support it. I mentioned it in Council. I think it's really important that, um, we invested in a staff member to create, um, business relationships within business to create that development, economic development, uh, sector that we were missing in our city. So, being able to partner up with the Chamber, who has already worked for many, many years with local businesses, has already created many relationships in the city, it's, it's a no-brainer, and it's, it's actually a great investment, because they have already a plan. And most importantly, they have already relationships with small, small business owners and the larger corporations that are here.
Okay, thank you. Wendy?
Can you repeat the question, please? Or is it a different question?
No, uh, same question. Uh, so, do you support or oppose the City of Santa Barbara's plan to partner with the Santa Barbara South Coast Chamber of Commerce on a development plan? Uh, there was no bid, there was no, uh, request for qualification for, for proposals, um, and it's gonna cost the city up to one million dollars a year, and also, they're counting on the sales tax passing to help, you know, pay for this. Uh, so essentially, do you support the city's partnership with the Chamber to create an economic development plan?
Great, thank you for repeating the question, Josh. So, I do, I do support the partnering of the Chamber, with the Chamber of Commerce, because we, we need to make sure that we have a centralized location and a, and a centralized voice of the needs of our local businesses. Um, I, I do wanna make sure that in, in this plan, we don't leave out our Latino business owners. We need to make sure that this is an inclusive plan, and it costing, you know, a million dollars a year, I mean, I, I want us to be able to explore other avenues of revenue, because at the end of the day, we can't only be relying on taxing ourselves to get this kinda thing through.
Okay, uh, we got time for one more question. If you hold your answer to one minute, it'd be, uh, swell, um, and then we'll go to closing statements. In the last five years, the state of California has spent twenty-four billion dollars on homelessness programs, and the unhoused population in the state has increased by fifty thousand. In Santa Barbara County last year, total spending on homelessness was a hundred and twelve million dollars, and the unhoused population increased twelve percent. How long can we defy the laws of arithmetic, and what is wrong with our policies? Alejandro, you're first.
Thank you for that question. I think as, as leaders, as policymakers, we have to be very effective when, when it comes to putting money behind programming, and we have to hold programs accountable. I was in a Zoom call where the county was giving, um, a report back to the, the unhoused issue, and they mentioned how seventy percent of the money that came from the state, they used it for administration fees. And so I think that a lot of that, a lot of the money that we pour into programming is going into actually hiring people to, uh, to, to manage these programs. And I think we need to be more, we need to think outside the box and be able to centralize the, the programs that we have to be more effective, and I think the city has done a wonderful job in creating the FARO Center, where we brought in, instead of working in silos, where we have, we have a lot of resources for the unhoused, and so now with the FARO Center, they're all in one central location, there's wraparound services, and that's more, that's more of an effective way to solve the unhoused, um, problem that we have, but it's also looking long-term, and that's actually more sustainable than working in silos and fighting for the same pot of money.
All right, Wendy?
Thank you, Jerry. I actually agree with Ms. Gutierrez. I, I do feel like we have been spending far too much time on the admin, or time, money on the administrative side of the unhoused population concerns, and less time on actually housing people. The FARO Center is a great example of those wraparound services that we do have access to, but really, the only anecdote to, to homelessness is finding people a stable home. And in criminalizing our unhoused population, and just doing encampment sweeps, that's a Band-Aid solution. It's only moving the problem from one place to another, and yeah, there might be a street that is now clean, right? But just because you don't see the problem doesn't mean that it ceased to exist. So we need to make sure that we treat this problem with humanity, with fiscal responsibility, and that we make sure that the money is going truly to create a path for folks to have a stable home, not towards the administrative fees.
Okay, great, thank you. It's been a great, uh, hour of conversations, but, uh, let's wrap up. Closing statements, uh, two minutes, just, uh, give us your best, uh, pitch summary for why voters should, uh, elect you. We'll start with Wendy Santa Maria.
There are too many issues facing our district and our city for us to remain complacent any longer. I've mentioned several today, housing, flooding, power outages, public safety. There are too many things at stake for us to miss meetings, for us to not show up, for us to not respond to constituents. We need a leader that is present, and the community in Santa Barbara and the east side knows that I've been that person showing up for them. I have spent years organizing in this community, pushing our, our city staff and our city council to, to really move forward on addressing the community's needs, and throughout the years, I've built great partnerships. If elected, I know that I already have the infrastructure and the support within City Hall to move these things forward. And frankly, I, I mean, if you asked me a few years ago, was I gonna be doing this? No, not at all. Uh, my roots are in being a working-class tenant who's just trying to fight to survive here, and trying to help my neighbors do the same. But unfortunately, we have seen a, um, a lack of representation from our current council member, and I had no choice but to run and answer the call from the community. I wanna make sure that we address the needs of, of everybody, right? Not just corporate landlords, not just one group or the other. This city is run by the working class. The city is run by the folks that keep the city, you know, running, and these are the people that I would be supporting.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Gutierrez, we'll give you the last word. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, it's been an honor to serve for my city. I, I've been sitting in the council seat for almost five years, so I definitely come with experience, I'm doing the job, and I think my voting record has proven that I am a leader that isn't afraid to take very important, you know, stance when they're not popular. And especially for a district like myself that does, doesn't always have representation in our city council meetings, I have really valued to put our community members' needs first than political agendas. And I think especially for being, for locals that have been born and raised here, I've said it over and over, sometimes, most of the time, locals will feel part of our neighborhoods, but not part of the larger community, and when you have a party that one time supported a Democrat, a young Latina Democrat from the district that wasn't polished to be a politician, and now they're against her? No, we need to have, we need to vote for leaders that are gonna vote for the needs of the people and not political agendas, especially in this city. The city has always been a city that is, we always knew it was only gonna get more expensive. It's such a popular place all over the world, so we have to be mindful leaders, but leaders that are also going to take a stand, even though it's, that it's not popular. Just like when the city was thinking about defunding the police. I took the stand to not defund this department based on, uh, what a department did in another state. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, uh, Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez, Wendy Santa Maria, thank you so much. What a great, uh, conversation that was, and very, very substantive, and, and I really appreciate your, uh, focusing on actually answering the questions that were asked, which so, uh, very often doesn't happen. Okay, that concludes, uh, our first district presentation. Thank you all.
Good job.